Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. For those who might be joining or watching for the first time, Committee of the Whole Meetings are informational-only meetings, when the entire Board gathers to hear about and discuss a particular topic or topics. At this, the first Committee of the Whole Meeting of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We are excited to be starting with a new flow of Committee of the Whole Topics, which are aligned to our strategic plan and to the themes of the school year. As interim Superintendent Cox and her team laid out at last week's business meeting, we will first have the opportunity to hear from office staff, from the central staff, correct? Okay. And then a collection of principals. And then we will have time, Board members, to discuss and ask questions. Clerk Ins, will you please call the role for the record?
Here.
Director Ali.
Here.
Director Ali. Director Suriel. Director Inzisir, Director Jordani.
Here.
Booker.
Here.
Director Green.
Present.
Student Representative Austin.
Austin.
Student Representative Weston. Chair Allison.
Here, thank you. Please let the record reflect that Director Suriel is not in attendance, but she's following COVID-nineteen protocols. But she is at home wishing she was here, she'll be watching us. Our sole item for tonight is the theme of systems and structures, creating the foundation. Interim Superintendent Cox, please go ahead with the presentation.
First of all, I just want to welcome everybody here tonight. Tonight, to me, is the start of something new this year. I have said, if you've watched some of my videos, I talked about my leadership style, it's all about distributed leadership. And tonight, I hope that shows, as we welcome colleagues here from central office, from schools. First of all, I just want to say to all of you, thank you for being here. Looking forward to the presentation as we think about August. And in our schools, it's really a time to set up those structures and systems that will make the school year ahead, one that's real very productive and relational with our students and families. So, I'm going to just throw it over to Senior Officer Amy Fearing, he'll get us started.
Hi. It's working. Hi, good evening. They told me to pause and wait, and now it's working. So, good evening, everyone. Board Directors, Chair Allison, Student Representative Austin, great job on the video, just, you know. We are releasing back to school, welcome back for our teachers. And Representative Austin was featured in the video, so I just wanted to say thank you. So, anyway, thank you for allowing us to begin, the Committee of the Whole, really discussing systems and structures. So, we'll start with the Academic Division, for professional improvement and climate, and we'll hear from our principals.
Sorry. So, here's a quote that I have started many of the meetings and professional developments, building leaders. Also, we will be bringing this to our teachers, to our support staff, about really changing the mindset in this organization, learning organization. And so, I thought it'd be pretty, bring it to the board and to the public as well. So, I'd like to read it aloud, I think that brings some emphasis to some of the things that we will be focusing on. This is by Peter Sengi, he is the author of the discipline that are in practice, the learning organization. Most of us at one time or another have been part of a great team, a group of people who function together in extraordinary ways, who trusted one another, who complemented one another's strengths, and compensated one another's limitations. Who had common goals that were larger than individual goals, and who produced extraordinary results. What they experienced was a learning organization. The team that became great didn't start off great, it learned how to produce extraordinary results. And so, as we move into this year, one of the points that we're emphasizing, emphasizing to others, we are a learning organization, and we must learn how to contribute to others. Just to review, this slide is one of the main committee of the whole, so I wanted to just again point out where we were last year, which was in the middle color, and where we're moving into this year. And in all four areas, those are being addressed and systems structures being set up as we head into this new year. So, again, that's what we're talking about in there. I wanted to highlight four academic priorities that we have as we move into the school year. These are going to be taken apart and provided in different ways for our staff to engage and to participate and understand. But these are the four things that we will be focusing on this year, academic division. The first is core content knowledge. We would like to, or we will be providing our educators an opportunity to professional development, learning walks, and also community engagement to engage in core content knowledge. No matter what the content is, we want them to be able to be learners, and to learn how to transfer that into classroom through students. The second priority is strong co-instruction. We've talked about this a lot, but again, before we talk about intervention, we have to make sure that the core is strong. Otherwise, our intervention will be unsuccessful. So, the third priority will be effective team collaboration, which is that we, Director Hunter, we're talking about in terms of our teams, and meetings for our staff. And then the fourth one is intervention and exploration. So, again, once you do the core, you still have students that have additional needs, so how do we do that? I did want to make sure that we see the green arrow, that we will be focusing a lot on professional development. Any different opportunities to engage with each other, and content specialists, with goals to help transfer what you know to how to teach students in a different way, but really keeping the core content as the focus. We'll also be engaging in learning walks, and Interim Superintendent Cox, and the Associate Superintendent, and schools that are going to support, to build schools, and also to get a feel of how these four are taking place in our building. And then the third one is engagement, so really making sure that our communities, our caregivers, our families, have the opportunity to learn with us, and have the correct information that can support us to be at that level. So, really seeing about how we can do this, um, more to engage our communities in these four priorities.
And now, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director of the Board, Officer Maria, who will go into more depth, with some of the professional development we've already had, and then what is to come this year. All right, thank you, Director Fearing, which is your executive director, members of the Board. We launched a year-long required student development, which began in the beginning of August for our building leaders. We first mentioned terms science of reading, which we've talked about in, talked about in, we've been talking about a lot when we have discussions around literacy. So, we provided time for professional development and science of reading, that evidence the research, that studies the science, is able to study how the brain is taught, and how the brain reads, learns to read, and how to communicate in language. What is our commitment to development, commitments for all of us this year? Is to lead our college around early and adolescent literacy. So, we've got all of our elementary K-8 administrators, our senior officers, our first session of their long letters, which title letters for administrators. We have our academic, as well as our four associate superintendents. And I want to share that our early childhood, and our executive director, Gaby, will be joining us. We see letters training this fall, which is early childhood. And we know that if early childhood, our teachers, the work around literacy, the growth of literacy. We must identify the necessary knowledge and will train. We've embedded all of our elementary, we need to make them literacy-tosa. And we believe as a lever, we believe, is a lever. And we have also committed to send all our elementary mothers to be able to participate in the three E letters training, which is three E stands for third edition. We provide an opportunity for our K-2 staff who support and work with students at eight of our elementary schools. And we recognize that for letters training, there are four units. There are four units, um, outside of the elementary school. And we will take approximately twenty hours of the combination of asynchronous work and the training. And we recognize that our classroom has run, containing a live six-hour session. And we recognize that work ahead. And we recognize that our students, teachers, and administrators, are teaching the letters. All right, the instructional practices. And we recognize that our students require the need to provide a guide for our adolescent learners to gain access. These practical practices are critical in all content areas, to encourage the development. Critical things, communication, and outdoor work. Alongside our, um, our friends at School Improvement, our executive directors, the executive department. We have the Office of Director Dr. Barry, and our board superintendents. And we have day-long learning with our students. As we develop deeper knowledge about the learning ways, and process language. It's important to understand how this information applies to working with their multilingual learners. And students who are education services. So, really great to be the executive director of special education. And we recognize that we have executive director, who is a part of the organization. In the, in the two days of professional development, because they will continue our work of professional collaboration. So, we are really excited to give the invitation of K-5, a new K-5 called Bridges. All K-5 and K-8 educators, we'll have an opportunity to make the preparing to lead bridges, implementation, and development. And then upcoming Thursday, all K-2 teachers will. Tuesday, we're going to talk to the ma'ali min ta'ana, we can get the question. On Friday, all of the K-5 teachers will. We can get the question. And during these two days, teachers will act. And we recognize that we have a math line, as well as with. What's really exciting about the math professional development program for our K-5 staff this year? It's not a one-and-done, where we load them up with a lot of professional development. And we have provided throughout the year, a job-related development opportunities. And we have, we have done that at different times, recognizing that we have elementary students starting at the end. And the focus of professional development. And we recognize that we're working on upcoming math. So, really focusing on that core and long-term instructional planning. Doctor Fearing shared earlier, about that speaking, learning organization. And this year, we are really excited to be able to be an MPS, a state for our education. It will be created with the intent to deepen the knowledge of our staff in various. And it will be focused on deepening their own knowledge around the content area. And what we know is that reading comprehension, and the mindics. And factors that are also critical to reading comprehension. And background knowledge, the reader has on that particular. And by providing these additional learning opportunities to deepen content knowledge for our staff, our goal is that we can try to, in our, our organization. And we talk about the strategic plan. It will take a collective effort, as it's a collective responsibility. One of the commitments that we have made at the academic. Is to come at sites, in classrooms, with building leaders, of students and country. And various cultures. And it's a learning walk, will be an opportunity to. And we recognize that we have a stronger connection to. And it's intentional way to establish a positive pathway. And we recognize that we have made, is to be established, and gain feedback. And we recognize that we have. A K-12 literacy care. And we recognize that we are going to be established. And we recognize that we are sharing and gaining feedback. And we recognize that we are. University is to provide a go-to place to learn about more, to learn more about our. And we recognize that. 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 North Carolina, here, 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 Carolina. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. Oh, no, 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 no. And we recognize that. 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 Executive Director, here, the microphone, here.
Thank you, Maria, good evening.
Maria, and my center, here, and I'm.
I'm going to give a brief update about school improvement structures that we support schools in getting in.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
But I want to start.
And we recognize that.
The first structure that you'll see is.
Go, and I guess, and I'm. And I'm. And I'm. Based on the information that we have. And we recognize that.
Isn't at grade level and deserves some additions.
And we recognize that.
The bulk of the planning.
And we recognize that.
At the professional learning community.
And we start with. And we need to plan for.
And we need to. And then they need resources and support from a leader.
And we recognize that.
And they need in order to.
And we recognize that.
For that child in the years. And that next structure is the.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. Which is the third structure. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And then other staff members that sort of flush out the group who leads. And we recognize that. And one of the clear connections that we're making. And we recognize that. 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 And then, and the I L T will oversee the school's school. And we recognize that. As their sort of guiding document. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. So, professional learning communities. And we recognize that. That teachers have a way to. And we recognize that. 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 And we recognize that.
They use, or they, um, many schools already use this.
And we recognize that. 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 And then adjusting as needed. And then, additional.
Do you know that PLCs get some time with school leaders to just check in about whether they're feeling like the group of folks that they're leading is getting the support they need?
And we recognize that.
The school improvement team is doing this year is providing professional development.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
So, I talked a lot about I L Ts. Um, again, that's.
And we recognize that. MBS, we're looking at that. And we recognize 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 that.
So, one of the functions that.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Alongside school leaders is, um, dig into the data that is.
And we recognize that. 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 And we recognize that.
Leaders of each PLC, I think I said. So, there's that really clear loop between the students.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
And one of the things we will communicate with.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Is that schools who are identified for some.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Looking for information.
And the support we'll be providing for schools in the second one. And we recognize that. 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 And we recognize that.
We have rebuilt the SIP portal, school improvement.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
So, I think it's been really important to us.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Start to see as we're. And we recognize that they are in alignment with those.
And we recognize that.
I'm handing it to Derek Francis. Oh, no, sorry, one more slide. To make this sort of real for you all. So, we provided a day of professional development.
And we recognize that. And we just pulled some representative work. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
I'll read the one that's a growth.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Folks said they wanted more time to engage with.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. Thank you, and I'll hand it to Derek. And we recognize that.
Good afternoon, my name's Derek Francis.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
The school board thinks.
And we recognize that.
Austin, I'm excited for your senior.
And we recognize that.
I wanted to take a moment for us.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Systems are in place for this year.
And we recognize that.
But, and so, you'll see it's going to fall into three areas here, school-based kind of support.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Professional development.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Going forward.
And we recognize that.
We ground ourselves in understanding.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
We have to be mindful where have we came in the past two and a half years.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
So, I'm thinking about even our city, Minneapolis.
And we recognize that.
Things we've seen in the past two and a half years.
And we recognize that.
Here in the Twin States, we've navigated.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Climate.
And we recognize that.
Navigated times for.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Between culture and climate.
And we recognize that.
We also had a period where students from not in school become.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
How we're going to improve.
And we recognize that. 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 And we recognize that.
How they experience the past.
And we recognize that.
So, first, in all students, regardless of.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
And we have to be aware of how we're going to.
And we recognize that.
And we have to be aware of how we're going to.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
For the opportunity.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
We'll have someone.
And we recognize that.
Come alongside.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
That's why we're here.
And so, I'm excited to be in a position. And the team is made up of about ten. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
And you see on here.
And we recognize that.
That really lands for the strategic plan.
And we recognize that.
By our community as welcoming.
And we recognize that.
And this isn't just a, this isn't just transactional.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
The next slide, uh, thank you for the clicker. Uh, I think it's important that where we're.
And we recognize that. 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 And we recognize that.
And making those connections with students and students.
And we recognize that.
We'll make sure that we're looking at the data, what are we looking at?
And we recognize that.
I'm really excited about this.
And we recognize that.
Their authentic experiences.
And we recognize that.
It's their climate, their schools, they're going through, so they're sharing bugs, what's going on?
And we recognize that.
And you have to start understanding from their world, of their lives.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
And we recognize that.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
I'll go to the last slide. Uh, some of that work has already begun.
And we recognize that.
And so, my colleague shared.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
We do have some really amazing.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
And see their identity.
And we recognize that.
And we recognize that.
And we recognize that.
And so, those are going to continue.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Climate and equity team will be coming together.
And we recognize that. And we recognize that.
Next week.
And we recognize that.
And we'll have ongoing throughout the year. Opportunities to provide professional development, but also come alongside schools and lead that work proactively. You'll see also intentional, and I want to give a shout-out to our leadership, Interim Superintendent Cox, for not just saying that we need to do this work, but being there. You'll see us at events coming up, we were at open streets, the open houses coming up. And this is collaborative, because we all in this space have a role to play in making sure the climate and culture is what we want it to be authentically. So, as events coming up, I look forward to seeing everyone in here at those events, to connect with people, to meet with each other. Uh, thanks for your time.
All right, thank you all so much. I think we'll transition now and have our building leaders come up to share, to do a share-out for us.
On behalf of our team, I want to say good evening, Chair Allison.
Chair Allison, Director. Interim Superintendent Cox. Student Representative. I am Laura Caver, one of the associate superintendents of elementary schools. And we've just heard about the systems and supports that are being put in place around the primary areas of literacy and math. School improvement and culture and climate. Those need to be put in place in order for us to achieve our goals of the strategic plan. But what does that look like in our schools? And tonight, we have some incredible school leaders who are here to share their systems and structures that they have put in place. In their schools as they do in their schools.
Good evening. First off, on behalf of the principals here at the table, I'd like to thank you for inviting us to share our structures and systems tonight. My name is Tara Fitzgerald and I am the proud principal of Anderson United Middle School. Tonight, I'm going to share just a brief snapshot of how we plan to align our Anderson School Improvement Goals to the MPS Strategic Plan. Last spring and over the summer, we synthesized the feedback from students, staff, and school leaders along with our school data. And we began to identify our systems and structure for our school. This work has supported us to begin to narrow our focus for our school improvement goals and has supported us as we align our work with the MPS Strategic Plan. What you will see are the areas that we propose to be our focus as we bring this work to our stakeholders. In addition, I would highlight our support squads under the student run goal in order to demonstrate how an area of focus came to be and can become an improvement goal. Throughout school year 2021, Anderson worked in collaboration with stakeholders to write a mission vision and four core values. We work to integrate these values in all we do. Along with our collection of input from last school year and school data, we utilized our four core values, highlighting inclusion as our priority value focus. And identified a key system that we would progress monitor in each of our four goals identified in the MPS Strategic Plan. For our academic achievement goal, we will focus on our system of MTSS and identifying and meeting the tier two and three needs of our students. For student well-being, we have a focus on our system of support squads. This system works to ensure equitable access to mental health support, basic need support, and support for social growth and success in school. For effective staff, we will focus on the PLC work of all content areas and how they measure the success of their tier one approach to student learning through collaborative professional development. And the use of data to ensure student growth. And finally, in the area of school climate, we will focus on our family events and identify new or improved ways to bring families together and to support collaboration between families and schools for student success. Tonight, I want to share just one of the four areas with you a little deeper, and that is our goal of our student well-being in our system of support squads. At Anderson, each grade level has funded and identified three specific support squads, one at each grade level. Each squad has a grade level specific candidate, counselor, social worker, two restorative practice deans, a food service provider, and a custodian engineer. In addition, we have a team of professionals that work together to support these three squads throughout the school. And they are the principal myself, a gear counselor, a social worker to support special needs services, a school support strategist, an MTSS lead, and a restorative practice lead. These support squads collaborate daily and weekly to identify students' needs in the areas of mental health, basic needs, student engagement. Incorporating and lifting cultural perspectives, sharing specific experiences, student learning, personal development. In addition, we have created opportunities for all three squads to connect monthly to support school-wide initiatives and celebrate the support of learners. Our SIBL will be created throughout the month of September at various events and meetings. Gathering stakeholders' input from ILT, PLCs, support squads, students, and caregivers. We will write a goal that measures the well-being of our students via our system of support squads. We will progress monitor this goal on a consistent basis and adapt it to progress with students. We look forward to sharing our story as we progress with this school. Thank you again for this opportunity to share our story.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Erin Brady, I am the principal at Edison High School. And I'm here today to talk briefly about a couple of tools that we use in support of adult learning. Adult learning, which is a person who better and supports the improvement of outcomes for our students. The first artifact that I'm going to share with you today is Edison's Guide to Professional Development and School Improvement. Refer to locally affectionately as the PD Bulletin. When it is printed and delivered, it's just a simple booklet like this. But you think of it much like a course syllabus. On the first day of a course, you are handed the syllabus which tells you what you will learn, how you will learn it, how you'll be assessed, and how you'll be supported in that learning. And our PD Bulletin really does much the same thing for our adult learners. It begins by laying out our mission and vision statement, which of course are our big goals for our community. But then specifically addresses the school improvement plans and the school improvement goals and strategies where we're focusing on literacy and academic readiness and school climate. It then goes on to detail how that work is integrated and the tools that we use, the research-based best practices that will support our teaching and learning of our students. And then it delivers a calendar. When will I learn this? What am I expecting to do by what date? And then finally, who are the teams that will support me in this process? And how can I access that support? So again, a very simple idea that really as an instructional year is an important activity for me to engage in every fall. Because it helps me think about how to truly stay focused on the work for our students. To deliver a plan, adult learners want to know that their learning has been very carefully designed with respectful levels, their talents, their time. And so I think we create a lot of trust with our staff and ensure that we have a plan and we're committed to see that plan through. So that's our PD Bulletin. The second tool that I'll share is another resource for teachers and schools who coach them. It is a reference for the text Cultivating Genius by Dr. Golda Hamet, which was of course an anchor text for our literacy framework here in the district. And here, some of my colleagues reference this as well. This is a very important text to us full of incredible ideas for engaging students in literacy around five pursuits of literacy. It is 172 pages of pure genius. Every word is so powerful. And so it can be overwhelming to use in a practical way for teachers. So our teacher development team created this guide. It takes those 172 pages and condenses it into five pages. One page for each of the pursuits of literacy. And it lays out the assumptions. In other words, what are the big ideas? What do teachers need to know and understand about each of these pursuits? And then some questions that really get them thinking about how to plan their literacy instruction with each of these pursuits in mind. So we hope that by distilling this incredible text and making it very user-friendly, teachers are more likely to use it every day in their planning to support our students. And feel that their identity, their intellect, their criticality, and their joy is centered in their student literacy. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today to share this.
Good evening, everyone. I am the principal at Square Lebik Green Central in South Minneapolis. I'm an Asmini. And we transitioned those parts of the company's district design from a community school which started last year at the beginning of the year. Violated school's system of student leadership by a magnet school. And tonight, we're just going to share two pieces of tools that we use here in the green in order to help us collaborate. I know that collaboration is incredibly important and having clearly defined roles and seeing how those different structures across our community work together. And help us all be successful. And Executive Director Hunter spoke a little bit to a lot of this. But first, just want to start with this diagram that we use that explains how our school's strategic plan feeds into our various leadership. So again, do that differentiated instruction. So first, at the beginning of last year, we sat down with various professionals. Did a comprehensive needs assessment. That resulted in a school. Next year, the various schools are looking at our local systems. And then the SIP feeds into that second box. Our program is implementing the best. And then also looking at equitable climate, ensuring that our students are safe. And then the SIP feeds into that second box. That second box that talks about the various leadership teams across our school. We have our instructional leadership team, which again is made up of different leaders across the building. From our special ed department, our English learning department, each grade level specialist. Including our educational support professionals who sit on the instructional leadership team. And the role of this team really is to progress monitor, so to make sure that those students. And the second leadership team is our instructional coaches team. And that's a small but mighty team that provides a lot of jobs. Helps them both implement their own practice through the job management. And then those leadership teams then feed into each of our grade level professional communities. Those teams are really responsible. And then there's also a lot of opportunity. So this varies too great in different levels, different meeting frequencies. Here's just one example. This is what our ILT does at the beginning of the year. So our ILT is always guided by the mission, the vision that's guiding our leadership team. We have our values, how we show up every day, how we do. And then each tool also has its own process. And this bottom portion talks again, another tool to define responsibility. Just a few tools that we wanted to share. Y mesuli yada hakmasar sarayno ahawlisa yagano. Y vahm sarayno. Everybody, I'm Ryan Gibbs and I've had the serving board community for a bunch of years. And I have to talk about systems and culture. And so at Lorian, we have our systems that are really built around. Safety expectations. Brand what makes Lorian's world. We start with our building expectations, which is all the kids, all the students, all the parents, all the seniors. We go back and forth throughout the year and you'll see shortly where some of our scholars doing that. We have a really strong anti-bullying program. Upstanders, we've got early age, so that's a huge part of who we are. We have a Lorian creed of success, which is a positive mantra which helps get kids in that positive growth mindset. And finally, I get to highlight our scholars. I think Director Caprini might have been a part of some of the comments we're presenting today. It's really important, we know that rhythm and repetition is so important for our kids. And we like to, kids know what we're all about, this is our brand. So we clean up our who are we chant and again you'll see our kids shine their hand. I tell the kids it pumps me up every time I'm sitting here pumped up at six thirty at night. But no, it's so important, it's, we have fun with these rules and expectations. They're really proud to be able to follow and respond. And we use it just across our whole school. So really, it's really important to have those systems and structures and culture and climate. Little sample of Lorian's culture and climate. The second I want to talk about is our literacy structure. So we have our district benchmark curriculum which also helps teachers. Principals just are going through letters training, which is really exciting. Class-wide intervention for more to help keep up more. And this year, we're really excited to add growth. So we're supplementing the foundational literacy skills instead of benchmark foundational skills. We're proud of where we're going as a district. I love seeing the alignment and the going places.
All right, and Principal Wright was not able to be here tonight to find an opportunity to share. Marka akhiyey vahal di'tek kurokat. So vahvaday yam shakadas. Some examples of the professional development that they did. They also are working, doing amazed work in anti-bias education. And you can see activities in the middle and it's like that. Empathy and understanding as well as. Some examples of the amazed work. Teacher-created lessons. And if you'll scroll up a little bit more, there are some discussion questions that they use as well.
Good evening, my name is Ahmed Amin. I'm a proud principal at Edison Middle School. I also went to Sanford Middle School. So it's extra special to me. And I'm sitting next to my mentor, so I feel like I have to do a really good job. So I just today want to kind of talk about some of the things we're doing at Sanford in terms of building relationships rooted in equity. in terms of building relationships rooted in equity. Sanford is a traditional six-eight, but also we're an FYP school, and in that regard, when it comes to pedagogy and curriculum, we do really well. We have a strong social leadership team that really creates the plans, and we have teachers who are bodying the right units, where I can tell you what units are being taught, to what some of the assessments are being used. And really, we also want to be really honest about where we are, so we do really well in that areas, our teachers collaborative, they work together, they're working towards creating cognitive assessments, our next task in that area is really standardizing our grades. So, and I've been there now for six years, and I'm going into my seventh year, and one of the things, last year we started with really, since we have the strong curriculum, pedagogy, how do we really make our ecosystem better for our students? And so, this Equity Center Trauma Formed Education book by Alex Benet is sort of our anchor text that we're also reading together. And what she does is she does a really great job in, in building our critical literacy around what trauma is, and what equity is, and how the two are linked, in the sense that trauma happens in schools. And instead of just using a strategy, how do we come up with a universal system to, to improve our students' experience of school? So last year, our equity team that's leading this work really looked at our school-wide system, looked at referral data suspension, spoke and listened to our teachers about what are the things that system might really need to change, and one of the things we really talked about last year was, how do we choose more joy into school for teaching and development? That's what we worked on a lot last year, and this year really shifting to what do our students tell us about how they experience school? So if you go to the next slide, we just really want to be honest, we worked at the five E Cultivate Data, which is a student survey that we administered last fall, winter, our students gave us feedback about sort of how they experience the school, and in particular in classrooms, and what the survey does is it really looks at what are the conditions that need to be present in classrooms for students to have the mindsets to be successful in classrooms? So one of the ones, for example, sixth grade, you look at affirming identities, so seventh grade, we also have affirming, and eighth grade, affirming identities, and, and I would say that's one of the areas that we took while at Sanford. And then on Rice, if you look at student voice and meaningful work, we have some areas of target that we need to do well at, and if you look at, I believe, the student's voice in sixth grade English, we scored a one. And so if you look at that scale of zero to a hundred, and I don't want to get into the, what that means, but like the closer that you are to a hundred, the better. So when you see a one, you're like, well, when your students give you feedback, you have to take that and then have the necessary good conversation. So we look at that data, we're honest about it, what are students telling us, what other data can we gather? And then if you go to the next slide, we have a tool that we use, that's part of our HAWA, that's just our strategic plan at Sanford. We go into classrooms and look at, is there meaningful work? Is there supportive teaching? Do we differentiate the work? What is the classroom and community like? And then lastly, what's student voice, right? In order to improve the conditions of school for the young, for our students, and our kids, and then using that feedback to improve our experience of school. So, that tool really allows us to set a goal for goal number two of our strategic plan, which is student wellbeing, and when you see that one, you're thinking, how are we going to get that up, right? I think having the conversations, coming up, going in and having these capacity building, learning blocks, and then setting the goals and really doing the coaching piece. This, this is not a gotcha, this is work where are we as baseline and then building off from that, and our equity team is going to lead that. Thank you.
All right, good evening, I'm Claire Peters, I'm the assistant principal at Seward Montessori, I'm filling in for our role as our incredible principal in this following COVID-19 protocols, I also get to sit next to my mentor tonight, thank you for all, so, also try to do a great job. So I'm going to really zoom in to talk, look at the Montessori observation, which is part of, part of one of our systems and structures in case. But really quickly, I wanted to give an overview of Montessori's, it's not familiar to everyone, just so that everyone understands how that fits into our, our systems and structures. So these are just the core components of Montessori. Montessori is a philosophy and approach to teaching that involves hands-on learning, and also helps students develop real life skills. So we have Montessori trained teachers that go through a two-year, almost like a master's program to become Montessori trained. We have multi-age classrooms, so our children's house, our standalone high five and kindergarten, our E1 or lower elementary, our first through third grade, and then our E2 or upper elementary, our fourth and fifth grade, and hopefully sixth grade, one day. We also use specific Montessori materials that follow a development of the child, that learning is directed by the child, we follow their interests and their passions, while also connecting it to the standards. Our teachers are what we call them guides, and they're guiding the child in their work. And then lastly, we have uninterrupted work periods, so unlike maybe more traditional classrooms, we have, we don't have like a literacy or a math block, we have uninterrupted work periods, where students are working on a variety of different works and a variety of different topics within small groups or one. So, in a Montessori program, large group instruction is really limited, so observing the child is a critical component of, of what we do. And through the observation of the child is how we gather data about the child, which is how we inform our work, and how we receive the standards, the state standards. Executive Director Hunter did talk about what PLCs are, and so if you scroll down, we do the, we, our Seward teachers engage in PLCs, and follow the plan, and do study act that Executive Director Hunter talked about. Within this, they can study, and they do study, a wide variety of Montessori curriculum areas. However, within all of those areas, the observation of the student is an essential part of, of that. We use the Montessori Assessment Playbook, which is created by the National Center of Montessori in the public sector, to help us guide our programming as a school, so it helps for our ILT, and we use it for smaller tools at a classroom level, so our teachers use this tool, or tools in this book, as to help guide their work. So as they're observing the child, if you scroll down, this is just an example of one of the tools that our teachers would use to help gather data, a formative assessment about the students, so that they can meet with their PLCs, to discuss how they can best meet the needs of their students, and which, what are their areas of growth, what are their, what are their strengths, so that when they're guiding the child, they can use what they already know, and then also where they need to be to help meet their learning outcomes. So this is just one small component and one assessment tool that we use as we work in our PLCs.
All right, so, these are just a few of the examples of structures in the system that are being put in place in all of the schools this year to ensure that our strategic plan can be successful. Thank you so much, team. Wow, I'm, I'm just blown away at, at this, I think, I think what this shows for me, and I'm kind of a little emotional thinking about it, but it really has started off our year in a way of interdependence between such offices and schools, we really want to continue that. Our leaders who are the first ones, I appreciate, you might have been voluntold or asked, but thank you for stepping up, we appreciate you all. We're very much looking forward now for having a discussion with the board, I hope you see that our whole team together is here to answer discussions, hear, enter discussion, answer questions, hear feedback from you. Also just want to mention that. That's what Dula was scrolling through, thank you for your awesome navigation of that. This tool actually will be up on our website for. And David Gorki for their work on this, they helped us too. So, Charleston, I'll turn over to you for questions as we move forward and discuss.
Student representative. Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to say how incredibly inspired I am by.
Oh, thank you all for being here. I had a couple things I just wanted to. But I think I maybe just will do just kind of one, and then others want to speak and maybe I'll come back, but. I was thinking back to the new math curriculum that we're talking about. Math curriculum, I, I saw Jita, I was like, what happened to one day? And I could do, no, I could, I could, I was like, I like it, I like it, I don't know. Caracolam can, my, 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 Wa niswa alina ya lakini. Lakini wa hi tosa esa. Administration and. Ma mulayasha yu sidha yeh dehain. Yu komitigas kartan. Wa haan wein badan bakasha kain dona arinta yade.
Speaks volumes, especially to get buy-in from your staff.
Lakini qalabta so kada shada doh kala.
And especially our, to get buy-in from our students, you know.
Ya da da enad gurba yitra ardada enad maasalamis. Oh, high schoolka merdo wa bilawaiba. Ma ba fuguin marka bilawan.
Uh, but, but I'll bring aside though, it's, it's, I'll be honest.
Lakini runta shige ya.
Excited for the beginning of a school year, beginning of a, of, of a new chapter and a new.
Arinta usub japtar usub in la bilabo.
And I am very anxious to see how we.
Wa feirin ena sidhai wa haudago. Wa nhasayinaya enan arkho sidhai wa haudago.
It's been a long time since I've been excited. We've had some trying times the last several years, but this is a very bright spot, I think.
Lakini wa arinta fiaan weesa sanwa marka.
Very encouraged and very curious to see how well we do.
Enan di regelina so wa haan samayno. Wa haan rje ena yeh ene rje fiaan behendono.
We do have to get this right eventually.
Marka wa enan hello wa an samayna.
The people we have here tonight.
Marka datka ena sha yeh ena medela eno. Yu wa ha es samayno ona intaha.
I think it speaks volumes. Well, thank you.
Marka wa maasintin damantin so dova da.
Well, we, we did, we did give them pizza before they came, but we will also give them support too.
Marka bizaya siyena datka nesa nima ene. Lakini.
Interdone with the principal.
Lakini ma mulayasha yu sidha shige enaniga yu shakala yeh. Ma mulayasha enad damantot diyar ayar unai enan husha kabano.
Make because all of our programs deserve to be seen.
Marka wa garambe dan dan wa hi mudayin enla arkho laga wa da halo.
We promised to bring that along.
Wa hambalama ena en arinta fiaan tai. Wa enmaal arina ya.
Tonight.
Ah wa enasamaysin.
Want you to hear not only the great things that are happening in our schools, but, but truly where our needs and our realities are.
Marka arinta akutka yeshkula dena kadaya keliya ma haqiqda mashata la na yeh laga halo.
It's my pleasure. There's my colleagues. If there's nobody else, nobody else wants to see me. Okay. Well, this, okay then. I think this is a really good conversation because I think it is really.
Wa hadha fiaan wa arinta.
We do best when we, I mean, we're all one district and so we do need to collaborate and we do.
Marka enan iska shano no ku hadha lo yu ena awin esa.
Um, you know, the schools can thrive at no.
Eskula do sahse horu marku garika ra sherkka enlaga lo laga wa da halo.
I've been on the board for a while and I know that we're always trying to perfect.
Marka enan emarwalbe enego sesiaga yu no. Wa nisku dey na ardada yeh enegi yu guddiga yu enla haga yemaruba. Marka wa haan joni ya enakala ya.
Suggestions on.
An sojidiana.
About a couple of things.
Doora remot.
I think it'd be interesting to hear, given the, to talk a little bit more about climate.
Marka arinta da kailmetka maadakka schoolka marka.
I'd be really, I'd love to hear more.
Enan hoga maaloha fasan wa ifiaan tai.
Too, and that was definitely referenced here earlier, just the number of.
Marka arinta ano arinti kuat preferasi sendor klasana soodha fei.
The latter preferences here about how.
Marka akbarat badan oh kenten bajira.
Just kind of what, it sounds like we have a couple.
Marka door wa ha bajira.
Climate coordinators, so.
Marka arinta daqakku gurinidarka enan maaloha hoga fasan sanatkan.
Especially in light of this disruptors that have the past couple.
Lakini. Marka door sanan la soodha fei deba ta jirtai. Marka wa haan rje eno sanatkan yu nuka duwata wa thora.
But it would be, I think, interesting to discuss.
Marka wa ha kalomunka laga wa da halo yeh tai wa ha wa yeh.
We're going to assess like our PD approach, how that's.
Marka PD arintas enlaga halo. Sidhai shakhainayso.
Assessing kind of the implementation.
Yu sidhi lo de, de li talos samayn laha.
This year, the science of reading and the new.
Ahreska yu calendarka usub, eskulkka usub. Sidhai eskulkka lo lo dakhmyo. Eskulkka sto ku duwiye kiore. Sidha andu ri no enan wa aragno. Abruchka ama sidhi talava de la qad laha metka eno ontonto. Eh sanatka dan yu damantiba.
Alright, so the team, we're going to start with climate. I'm glad that you heard that tonight because I think when we're talking about systems and structures.
Marka wa maasanta enad kailmetna madad eskulkka bilaka ta sah.
Is of top priority.
Marka wa munan ta kuat eh anna wa la na. Eh horu marinta wa ha barashada enlaga halo kailmetka maadakka.
I'm going to start with.
Wa ha joni ya enanka bilabo.
Hi Derek.
Derek.
I'll start with you and then we'll pass it to the principals.
Marka Derek wa nka bilawa ena ma mulayasha kuwaxaya.
So I'm sharing a response.
Aniga sidha andu ri ya di sha wa ha we.
What is the climate team?
Kailmetin ha wa yeh.
These times responding to students.
Sidha ba ardado la shakhaina.
I have families and so I think.
Famila de seno la shakhaina.
While connecting, collaborating with the school.
Iska eri kaya iska shiga eskulkka. Wa haan haqiqinana.
We're listening. We're.
Otoko wa ena degayso no datka nesa no.
Eye of understanding what happens.
Datka kala. Famila di ardado yu kominiti.
When we talk about climate.
Marka kailmet.
Not just out there, it's be mindful if.
Marka kailmet wa ha wa horto ogowu. Datka wa ha yu diinen ogowu.
Watch this space from a culture climate through a camera for the.
Marka kamera yankada wa na yeh na oru sanan la soodha fei. Marka enan arinta no tru duwata so. Enad abaratto. Sidha dakanka datka neseidireme yeh. Se lo so duwiin ya. Marka aniga coordinator haan wa ena barato.
And while they come alongside Bill and Staff, we're providing resources.
Marka shakala ena bahanarizos. Annaga natimka anna wa ha wa yeh. En te khabratda ha yu horu mar ya arinta.
Some of that work looks like.
Marka arinta wa shakhainaysa. Marka yu neki eskulkka yu hadiga. Sidha ba sad horto degayso datka. O isu esku wa ha eni.
Intentional to of our families who have been historically marginalized.
Marka dadwa ha jara la yu so laga wein. Oh, datka enan degayso no. Degayinana yala no datka.
Well, who are those populations in your student.
La boshika kuwa kuwe wa yeh.
But also when we say professional development.
Marka professional development marka amka la yu.
Live in Minnesota.
Wa Minnesota.
Minnesota nice tries to avoid having some of these conversations. We don't want to talk about.
Conversation can wa diinen. Arinta enan kala la marano. Annaga datka menin. Marka la naka kailmet coordinator hadanai. Enan ogano. Arinta sadu baratai. Feedbacka. Sidha ba ujo wa be kara. Datka. Sidha ba dimir u yala na famila den yu wa ha samayna yan.
And so that's what some of that work will look like, but then also it's the proactive going at.
Sidho kana enan aktifan eskulkka. Enan chanes awuro. Oh, datka kariduwa.
Realizes that.
Adan aragno wa.
Have such a diverse school.
Eh ardada kariduwa yu shakala kariduwa.
Doing the intentional work to actually know about the person who is beside you who.
Marka wa enado tu roh hadan kada yu roh kala.
Some of our organizations that we lead school work with, like Dare to Be Real.
Marka enan ardado ta riera ha no da diira ha no. Marka sito sanan eskula horo no. Ardada. Ardada raban conversationka nesa maya. En maaliminti eno yeh degayso na ardada wa hi lehin.
Equity and Climate Coordinators.
Senan ahan yu dakan ahan dakiyirhan. Wa hi ma shaya la enan eskuherka samayno. Marka enan ha wu yala sanatka. Wa hiaba an samayno arima sah kamida. Sanatka odam.
What I want to hear you say is that we're, it helps us expand capacity. We have a group of folks at the central office who are there specifically to.
Marka warka da wa ha nu famai. Enan awadu yala. Awadha dan snu. Ha eskulkka snu. Of ba joga yeh.
Equity and School Climate Team.
Oh, senan ta yu dakanka kala. Oh, tagairaya maaliminti yu ardada. Resoski yeh bahanaya. Wa arinta kabiya la da yu resistamka, ka horto gaya.
Some of the professional development.
Marka wa hiaba eskula dena da yeh samayna yana wasa.
Leaning into our relationship with the building.
Marka harirka ala samayna wa eska shi. Annaga keliya me central office shakala. Yu building staff kaba intaba yeh samayna yawiin.
Are receiving this kind of feedback.
Marka arinta yeh da ena feedback samayna ardada yu marka odam basa. Wa huyseska yu sidha amku uganeno. Wa ha la yeh sidhai huyseski no lo so duwiin. Sidhai famila du esku arkan lafto da. Wa maasanta.
Are there any principals who'd like to share kind of how they're approaching culture this year?
Kormera raba dakanka war din tai sidha lo lo ma mulayadu jiro. Gaan tai taiwa.
Check, okay. Um, at Seward, we came back on Monday.
Seward Monday wa sono ona.
Nationality and belonging.
Marka arinta wa ka la yeh wa haanka bilawa na aray bidi gena.
Specific focus on the.
Marka arinta focus gurinasi naysanu. Haqiqinno. Maaliminti eno ene so no dhan halige la ravi. Yu aytagan mecha ilehin. Yu sidha ba nikalaasiyada. Usamayna ardada marka yu so no gata. Yu mecha kalasiyada ilehin. Levadi beri la soodha fei.
That idea of how we.
Figurata yeh da sidha no haqiqinla ena. Ardada eno ene so no dhan wa kasha kainenai.
Couple of days.
Door ke beri soos ootan. Marka arinta yankawada ha yon dona. Senan ta yu dakanka yu eskulkka arinta yeh da dakanha. Are we, um, marka.
Not being welcoming.
Marka maalina so duwiin ya maan so duwiin ena.
And then just more from a systems and.
Marka arinta systemka yeh dona yeh. And dona ena sidha na kada lo. Dakanka sidho no ondo no arinta programka leftisa. Enan aburjixi. Ka so mujina yahoner siwa malan sho.
If it's okay, I'll move on to the second question. I'm going to have Senior Officer Fearing and Executive Director Hunter. Talk a little bit about what looks different with our PD this year and how we're going to assess that.
Wa bidi ga sanatkan nuka duwiye kiore. Sidha esbanku uganka rana yu nuka duwiin.
Just to clarify, I think I heard pretty clearly what's different. I think I heard some really great examples and it sounds like people are enthusiastic.
Marka kuli wa li sha yeh figuradwa wa ka istaa lakini. Akajwa orta yeh da na.
But I, I did hear part of the question have to do with the assessment of PD. Like how will we know what we're doing?
Marka suashwa ha wa yeh sidha ku ugan ena wa haan samayne ena hadha. Yu eskulkka tasanu fami suashwa. Juwakta gaban wa ha wa yeh.
More present in the buildings and speaking informally with staff, whether it's building leaders or teachers, that we're hearing it as a part of shared language, right?
Marka horto shared language yeh ena samayne ena.
We're hearing that educators are talking about that, you know, in order for students.
Marka wa haan ugan ena maalimintu si uga wa ha ku sakhres. Wa ene uga deno ta recognition yu lo qaddi. Ena yarana yale mu. Marka arinta yeh da tarikh ena feirinno. Wa kahib fahankai kamida. Marka ena samayno.
After the letters training and just simple conversations with the teachers.
Marka wa ha jodka yeh wa ha.
Then I learned this and. I'm like, yes, we're doing it for MPS this fall, but.
Marka maaliminti ena wa haan usamayne ena marka wa ha wein ena fahannu. Marka qalab kariduwa no lo halaya yu sidha wa ha lobaraya maaliminti.
Elementary classrooms. So that is what I would say for the short answer of this.
Marka shod alsa wa sidhai yeh da. Lakini wa ha karamna yeh. Marka mustaqbalka yeh feirso. Maaliminti enad badan wa naga kamida. Shan sanen ena sugnuma ha. Siha nuga la samayta ilehda hai.
But you have to wait five years to see.
Marka ena sugto shansano wa ha kasa. Sidha horu marki leka garai.
PD that we're giving should impact individual students, if not classroom.
Marka arinta yeh da ene ardada samayna so wa ha we. Marka arinta wa nisma kuat eh ilma.
Some educators that on their own, they have.
Marka maaliminti kala wa ha jahli go da esta. Barso. Marka lakini wa ha kasa ena eskullis terekite yu konterke tai. Yu maalimintu enai samayan. Marka in tilugudar laha enai samayan wein.
Talk a little bit more about the technical.
Hantra yeh kala yeh qabka lo samayno yu. Hantra yeh du ri qabka lo, lo samayna ena kada sho.
Share just some context with.
Marka wa ha du ri ya enam kada lo. Wa ha we akbarat badan. Mustaqbalka yu so soodha. Door ke samayla soodha fei wa hi hayit. Qabka yeh balu shinkan usamayno.
Focus and it's actually funded through Senior Officer Bennett.
Marka kahibti horu Bennett Office ba samaysin.
What we took a look at in the very first.
Marka ko feirin nesa kuda wa ha. Levai eskull sanakoa.
Structures for PD, what's getting in the way.
Mahan ena hor tai gen oru marki ena hor tai gen. Wa arinta eskulkka ardada.
A lot of the data that had been gathered in the past.
Marka ardada eh tabadan ba la ururi akbarat badan.
Surface level, right? It was experience level.
Xabratda. Bahoran ta yeh kada sho. Maaliminti yu ha wa yeh yekaitis. Enai muhim wa yeta yeh da.
Really intentional help in terms of, so now what does it look like in the.
Marka skalasku wa ha wa kandono. Sanatka la soodha fei.
Begin more deeply in partnership with.
Marka doktor ka yeh hor shasalwa khabtai. Marka garhan kaitu let, let teresaya munan teresiyey. ماركا غاران كا يتو لترس ايا منان تلسيهي ماركا غيبا واها فيرنتا فيرينو وهاوي يو مستقبل دا ايان كا لدونا لكن واهبرشادا لهردا ماركا كراسرون كا فاين سيدا لو فيرينا يو سيدو نو عاوي برограмك نيسا غا محا لو باهيا محا لو باهرا دورا ماركا محا ماشي يا لا سكول سوس غوتان محا غار ايا دا كامدا ماركا غار غور ماركا دا ايا لو سمين يو هدا واهان سودا من وله استعمالي ماركا تا ايا دا اينا سمين محا موهيم وا دا ور كا سنتا يسوس غوتان انو غودام سيدا بيدي سيدا يسوعتو يو سكول ياركا ماركا غورشو سنتا وهاوي اينان تا يررو فيرين سيدا اوغاه لو كا ل ماركا غور ماركا معلمينتا اينان كادالو اينا سينو ماركا بيدي دا كا بعد اينان غور ماركا سيو ونو الا سام ماركا كا غارينو ماركا سونلا ودا كادونو موري يا ايا كومنتيغا استا ماركا واهان دوري يا اينان دلو ودا وماركا انو غوتان ارنتا دك دك اوغاس تا ماركا لغار وان هيسا اينا اخبارات بدن باجرا يو هبرشو بدن يو فرحاب بدن ماركا يو تدو بلنبا هستا ماركا غورسا دامبا نو ايا لهاد يو تدواد ماركا غوتان سكول كا دان بوت دان كيلغا بلاب يو ماركا وهاي كا ارنتا سيدا اد стрاتيجا دو سمينا سو او غور ماركا غارا غوريس اخرستا سيستماتي كا سيدا وكالانا وين هالمر مغوري كاررو غور مر هالمر لاسمين كاررو ماركا ماموراش وهاوي انگار نو وهاوي وهاي ناسيين اخبارات كابو غوت يينا ناسيان يو اماسئلا اكينا لغا ودا هاللي كارو ارنتا لاخلي دا لكن ارنتا واهان دو نا يوغان كينا اين اي كا غيب قاتان يو تيلابا دك دك اينا اي سمينا ماركا دا توي لغا بلاب يو هاي اركان اما امغلا نكالاسكا بس سنتا ماركا ارنتا ماركا بجت كا نكالينو ايان كالينو سيو داينا الامين
Thank you Chair and to all the presenters tonight for all the information.
وان سنتا شير يو غودي كا ل اخبارات بدن بدن ماركا اخبارات بدن بدن كا سينين ماركا واهان ارنتا توس او غور مر لغوار يو ايان ارنتا
I'm excited to hear that. But what I also heard was the learning walks that we will be implementing. And I think that's critical because again coming out of the buildings and we're actually walking through the schools and seeing what's been done, what's working and what's not. What I'd like to see also is just, I love that the principals are bringing us information and as we look forward to hear the teachers, to hear from the parents and also the students. I think that would help us again to see how things are working, what we can do better as we try to just build excellence within the PDS. One of the things too that I was really excited about was that we are, the uniqueness within the schools. I think everybody showed up different. And that speaks to the value of families that we serve. Just recognizing that we, we serve a very multicultural school. And it's critical for us to understand the culture behind that. It's critical for us to understand the needs. And I feel like we are actually striving to do that. So that's just a really good space to be in for us to move forward. But I'm looking forward to the school year as we continue. You guys all know letters was one of mine. One of the things that I was glad to hear that we picked up and we are using that within our school system to really make sure that teachers are getting the professional development that they need, the tools are being provided. And as we talk about culture, there's a book that came to mind to me that I read a while ago by Dr. Mohamed Khalifa, The Culturally Responsible School Leadership. I just wanna put that out because I think that would be an excellent tool for us to add as we continue to try to serve and understand the families that are kind of through our doors. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Caprini.
Thank you Chair Allison. Thank you everyone for the presentation. I love this so much. I have a question about choices. The choice to participate. I believe it was this round about that. What is the percentage? I don't have to give me the information tonight. But I'm interested to know what is the percentage of staff that chooses not to participate in some of the professional development? It doesn't matter what it is. But specifically when it comes to literacy, is that something where it's just teachers that are teaching literacy? Or it can be say, I don't know what the term is, a science teacher? I don't know if a gym teacher would find it useful or not. Maybe not, I don't know.
لكن وهاربا ومحاي سكول ارنتا معلمين تا تورتاين يو سكول دا كا يبكمدا او ارديدها وهاي استا واسو سكول التا اما تاين مكاسا واهبرشادا فضلا وتركاي هالكي وغوتا لغالا بكاسا دا يا مكاشي
Participating participating in some of that professional development. I'm sure you probably think of the schools that I'm thinking of.
وله كا يا وينا فسكت سكول دا كا ديس غيب تا سواش وهاوي وغان كا دونا جمعا دا مالكيسا سكول دا دا معلمينتا تورا واهاسمينا وهاوي اينا معلمينتا ييلز تيچرز، سجلي كيشين تيچرز معلمينتا واهان شنا خاس معلمينتا سكول كا دا وانس واسكوي مري دونا ماركا سكول وغين وستاينا وتو معلمين كا ودا وينا وهاي تا ايا دا سا برانكو ماركا وغادا وغادا سخو هيكا اينا وها وغادا سا كار دونا ماركا ماركا كا دونا واهان اينا فوسا اينا وين كا فسكت ماركا واهان اوغان دونا كورتا ناكسو دو دو كا وهاي تا سراشني وغولم كا شوكي وغوري بوكت قادا دا ايا توركا واهدا واهدا وابات لادا كوك ميسو تا سرادا تا سرادا وغادا توي يسنا وقام سينا قام سينا مالمشقلا وعل ماركا جمعا دا مالكي واه فيرينا يسكن باخرين سكنين كا خرين يعني بتوي كو سري سيان اوغان ستيكوا وغا وتوت كنا وروان اوغاي Well, actually all during August 3rd during the letter training. I know a lot of friends were saying, okay, so my teachers are going to get this training right? معلمين تا تبكت ويا واهيرينا تبكتا سما سو نا ينسي باي وغوا يو ربين اين شقلا يو دل كا يرو funding and capacity to coaching. We have selected eight sites. And we selected those eight sites based on the spring early reading fast bridge scores. And so we are really prioritizing for the and the eight schools. If you want to hear who the eight schools are, Art Falwell, Whittier, HIA, Jenny Lind, Bethune, Nellie Stone Johnson, Hall and Ashenabe. So those are the eight schools.
Oh, and one more thing. I didn't ask this question as like an
كم ويدين سوا اش وهارا وينو اوغادا ومهيم اني كم هي برشد ونا وساني وغادا تك تورتا اينا كا نسا وكرا تيتا مالكي رشق كا يهستا وغوي سوي بيلا يو كارا نباي سو تلكي واه دوري بهيميتا يو غادا سكاس واه نو قن ايتا وغادا تكري را كا بات تكري تا ويفينا لايدين وغادا ووشق كا يو تكان نا راه يعني برتا يمبي ليا سرقة راه لكا لغادا يو خنتا يا سات يتره دوري خدو لولو وشق كا يو تكسل وهاوي معلمين تو ايني تفاين يستا تكما دو نا يكفاين ستو كا عاوماتا لغادا لغادا يو وانغوليس واه كابو قير تد تا نما ويلينو غيبات واه دويا اش دا نكاشق كا يا وانكاشق دا بري دا يا سكول دا خوسي اينيا بيسو سبوكا يو شقلا انتخار شخور يو مالكي سا تبركا قاتان يو ميشا سترينا غوش كا يو ماركا تيا وغانو قف روا ان غوي ديستا روا واه عاونا يا سكول كامينيا بساني وغوسا ميكر معلومات بدن هيسا يسرا كا ودا تا ونال كا نا
Thank you, Director Inz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your presentation. And you're always really helpful to hear from people that are working in our schools on the hard things about being on the board. And be on jobs. The time that we spend here on the board
وقت غارا كا نسکول مينا كا نو وقت غان واه فيان سانكو ان اوغانو وان ودا وشقينو سكول كا كبرنا سو تككاشقين يا سكول كا ان حارنا وكران تتنتكت سكول كاشقين سكول دا كولا هين ونا شير كا واهين سانكو انك اوغان واتو وفيان تاين يدت كا سو كاشقين يا ونا نا شير كا يا وينا نا غريستا اينا معلمين كا ان سكول كاشقين ارديه دا اينان كمغلوين اينا ل سستم كاسو شقين يو
I don't know if our teachers back then, some of them maybe. I think of it as like, yeah. Director Booker's laughing because I keep telling everybody that. How's it going? I'm like, I work this week. So but uh but um, oh, I just think about it like, you know, this is preseason. Like I was thinking about an analogy. It's like, you know, it's great, everybody's optimistic. We got the new coaches in and we're, you know, big, big ones. But the kids are gonna show up in a couple of weeks and who's gonna change something? I'm looking forward to hearing about how many students come back, their kids. And what difference it has. Look forward to that. So hopefully it'll come back and follow up. I'm looking forward to that. A couple of questions that don't have to be answered by anyone particular. But I'm wondering about some of the changes that we've experienced over the last year with respect to maybe like the teachers' contract and some of those things, the class size caps. You know, the staffing changes that may have been necessary as a part of that. I'm interested in hearing from you how that might affect some of the systems that you have come. I'd like to hear about it. And then I guess that's maybe, oh, one in particular kind of esoteric question that happens about like the math curriculum. What is already going on in your system? Montessori math is a thing, right? Parents are always worried about the math in Montessori schools because of the particular way of teaching math in Montessori schools.
I think I'm gonna start with Senior Officer Bennett, who had a chance to kind of sessions with our principals to go through the contract. And what's about to the principals to talk about the impact. So you want me to talk about the presentation?
سمت كم واه تطلا اينان كارنا
Yeah, yeah, just wanna just talk about the why and just a brief summary.
برا دو سكولا واه لا كومي وغاميش سكول سا تبو فيرنا سيدا انا شريا باينا برمتيم قادا كسوو باهينا سرايكي ماركا سيدا فرمين وغلي باسكول راس كوا فميه يو سيدا اوغودا ميتونا شرود يا لقيا شيني يو واهيا لخاص اهان مهاسا غين كوت ميتا ماركا راحسي لهارا ترجسرا سيان بتبكتا ميني سو سي اي اوغانيا را ارنتا لغو كا يو انو ويا سكول ويا قانسخ سو واه فيان مكما غلينيا لغاميش سكول سو واه دا يمين اينا يتفعمنا ويا لقيا شيني وعل مال قلادا ميني هينين وتكما دا كتكتا تاسنا واحد فيغرا وسي سيدا غانا اين ايا شير كو وغف دا مهيمان ويا لني فيا وغل كا واه قلم يا ترتد نا كار قف ماركا ميش كمل مرا مالكالا قنتراسيا
Mine is just in respect to the strike. One of my takeaways as a leader in the building while the staff was outside the building was about climate. So last year Anderson was eighty-five percent new students, eighty-five percent new staff. We're beginning to know when others are trying to reach out and they're struggling to do so. We found the obstacles last year. And so my takeaway, reflection of those three weeks, how my point is to create a time for staff to get together and really build those relationships. Despite all the work in front of us, I need to create that time. So that was a reflection that I learned and I'm here for this year to make like a brilliant time or about bringing staff together.
Maybe I could follow up with like a more specific sort of example of whether this is impactful or whether the decision process for that. You know, when, when discussion was around class sizes and the teacher's sound. And the discussion that was going to impact the way staffing happened at schools. And frustration in totalism. Interventionists and if any decisions had to be with respect to that. And, and specialists versus totalism. That was a regular question that came up. Right now, if that's been decisions have had to be made, that would be kind of the way to
I think I'll start, you know, from my seat to my side. This is second BTA process which affected and I think you could put better examples from your seat about what that looked like. I think we are right now thinking about as we look at our performance, at our staff, at that step in the investment, what our class sizes look like. Those can be backwards. So it doesn't have to be you know, naturally once but twice to make that. That was a lot of work, I know. But you know, I know some schools had adjustments for the reasons for the contract. Anywhere with examples that they
قفت السالو هيا يا ترتد تا رميا نا ودا كا
I guess I can talk a little bit about a couple of things that are impacting us currently and how we've attempted to do our work at the progress since my first stages. So in the second round of there were a couple of things that happened. One, we took a pretty significant financial hit which caused us to have to really go back into our academic aspirations back then. And we had, we had bought up in the first round. We had added a social worker. We had created an MTS, MTSS model to support tier two and three interventions. And we needed to decide if we could still do that. And we really had a lot of conversations, not only really thinking about the feedback we've been receiving from our employees and our staff, but also, you know, what, what were those core values that we had and what would we have to sacrifice to keep those plans moving forward? And so ultimately, we did need to let go of some, some elective courses, some of those things that really provide that enrichment for our students in order to be able to provide the additional mental health support and really deliver literacy and math interventions to adequately serve our students academically. So we are looking for ways to mitigate those losses with some of our community partners through our school programming, volunteers. And then really having to kind of restructure the schedule of our, our teachers on special assignments. So those who had been really able to serve in a full-time capacity to coaching teachers now maybe are teaching a couple of classes in addition to providing that coaching. But there's some positives to that too. To be in the classroom for part of your day and that serves a coach. There's a relationship there and a credibility there that really matters. There are some happy accidents that come out of having to make these kinds of decisions and just, and really staying focused. I think our biggest struggle right now is that that second round of BTA pushed our hiring process out. We feel a little bad in recruiting staff. So a little bit of shuffling to figure out how we'll fill in for, for vacancies.
Thank you, that, that's helpful. And so I guess what I take away from that was there were, there was real decisions that you had to make as a result of the change.
I would just like to add, I think there was a similar pattern that happened at central office. So that people to be aware of that, that also happened at central office. And I think similarly, there's a lot of shuffling and happening in priorities of work. I think that again, the strategic plan has been started. Do those decisions and look at the work. Sure, thanks. Thank you, Director Booker.
Thanks a lot. I really appreciate you guys coming in and performing that way. And it was a team approach. Just listen to him, listen to all of the parts. I'm very excited about people and, you know, different acting sides. This is overall, you know, happiness or I don't know vibe that we're having here tonight. It's really great. I guess my comment is that we won't answer it tonight, but I definitely like people that are in, you know, we speak about, you know, impact. And so I think it's what I would like just to what I would like just to what I would like just to students keep on leaving our district and see what type of things we can work together to how to either, you know, maintain numbers of business or decrease it. And like to work there.
Yeah, that's a major priority of myself also to stabilize our enrollment over this year. As we look towards the future and having a new superintendent onboard next year. So we'll continue with our enrollment updates at the board and also work to integrate that as we think about the upcoming themes and how we can integrate that also.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is a very important topic. And I believe that especially as we are in the middle of still difficult time, that it's about the time that we have to invest time and energy and resource towards climate between the school and the community among staff members in schools as well as central office. It's really kind of a time that we need to all of us practice social, emotional learning towards work support to one another. I take all the work you're doing. As we move forward, I wish to see that the big change happens. You know, we have a good respect, support towards one another. Giving the support to the families, all families. It's really important. Same thing also amongst the staff members is also very important. Especially those of you who manage buildings. You know, thank you for the work you're doing. Same thing here, also here managing. And senior officers here also should really pay attention. Senior officers here also should really pay attention to that, to the climate in general. As also a board member. This is also area where. Pay attention. It's the time. We can have a better academic outcome. Safe, effective for all of us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Lee. I am seeing no one else in the queue. It's going to enter. I mean, I want to thank everyone for being here, our leaders. Our staff, board directors. Looking forward to our change this year. And spreading this joy as our teachers come from. And so without objection, I will help you with your hard day. On September thirteenth.